Okay, I think it's six o'clock, so I would like to get started. Um, I'm will call to um order uh the Town of Rutland Select Board, as well as tonight we will also working as a Board of Public Works. Um, it's six o'clock uh on Monday, July tenth, uh twenty twenty-three. We are in the basement of the Rutland Public Library. Uh, I think we have Zoom on, so everything is on Zoom. We are also being recorded for live streaming on cable as well as record uh for recording at a later time on local access as well as on demand YouTube. So if we can start with the pledge, please.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
My true republic, for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You sure your clock is right? That that's Simon's just went off. Usually it's before the hour.
My phone says six oh one.
Why you?
Yeah. That's what I have.
Peter.
Oh, so it's a fire department we have to go after.
You need to talk to him, Dick.
He must have dozed off.
Um, so I would, we have some uh uh, we need approval of Treasury warrant and payroll for both the um finishing out twenty twenty-three as well as moving into twenty twenty-four, so I'd take a motion.
One comment before you do. Just so you know, um, so obviously this is um, I don't think it's the last warrant for F twenty-three, but it's kind of one of the the closeout warrants. Um, so just kind of paying some outstanding invoices and bills for the year. And then the new uh warrant, um, just so everyone knows, it uh, we're prepaying the um retirement assessment at a two percent discount as well as some other uh prepays for some software and such that we get a discount for paying it. So, so you know.
And I think that's not uncommon. I think we generally try to prepay if we can. Thank you.
One, one motion, all.
We can do them all together.
Okay. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve Treasury warrant twenty-three dash twenty-seven and payroll twenty-three dash PW twenty-seven, also Treasury warrant twenty-four dash one and payroll twenty-four PW one actually requested.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And I think just uh another comment is the fiscal year twenty-four is the um override budget. So, correct, we should start seeing some um increase hopefully in services and staffing and everything in the upcoming months.
Right.
Um, the prepayment of the pensions, is that one of the things we're signing tonight? Or how much was the prepayment?
No. It's uh just over a million dollars. So our, if you look at our budget, the regular assessment is, you're gonna have to look that up for me, but uh it's essentially a two percent discount if we pay it upfront.
Okay, so it's a million.
Any other comments, questions? We'll call here.
Uh, Secman, I.
Mattson and I request myself from table access.
Ledger, I.
Governor, I, excluding Seppless.
And White man, I. Um, next, we have approval of two sets of meeting minutes. Um, our uh regular, I'm sorry, our goals and objectives meeting from Thursday, June twenty-second, and then our regular meeting from Monday, June twenty-sixth. Um, I think everybody was present for both of them, so um we can, and then if there's questions or updates, we can se- separate them out.
All right. I'd like to make motion to approve meeting minutes, June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three. Also, uh, motion to approve executive session meeting minutes, June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three.
Actually, can we hold the exec- just do that separate?
Just the meeting minutes, alright.
Just let's do the meeting minutes first, cause then if we'll approve the executive session to either hold or release.
Okay.
Is that okay? So the two regular meeting minutes.
June twenty-second, twenty-three, and June twenty-sixth, twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments, corrections? Hearing none. Harry?
Secman, I.
Mattson, I.
Ledger, I.
Governor, I.
White man, I. Thank you, Tamika. Those goals and objective minutes were a lot. It was a long meeting. Yeah, thank you. Um, and then I would take a uh a motion to approve um the executive session meeting minutes from June twenty-sixth. I personally would be okay with them being released. I don't know how the rest of the board feels though, so.
I'm sorry?
With those meet, the executive sessions to be approved and released, I would be comfortable with them being released, but I'm not sure how the rest of the board feels.
No, I think I'm comfortable with that also.
Okay.
So throw that in there.
Yep.
Uh, I'd like to make motion to approve executive session meeting minutes uh and the release of such uh, June twenty-sixth, twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Harry, roll call.
Secman, I.
Mattson, I.
Ledger, I.
Governor, I.
White man, I. Thank you all. Um, I just wanted to kind of start by saying good evening um and thank you all for such a great Fourth of July celebration. Um, we did it in true Rutland style, go big or go home. Um, it was a long, long weekend of events. Um, and we need to thank the Fourth, the work of all the Fourth of July committee, as well as all of the other volunteers that made the events go on. Um, as well as our staff and employees, department heads, there were a lot of people here on, on their own time, spending time away from their family, um, their friends, their celebrations. So I wanna say thank you to kind of everyone that made the weekend go so smoothly. Um, without all the volunteers and time and commitment of so many people, um, the Fourth in Rutland wouldn't be what it is. Um, we had a nice celebration, uh rededication of the um old burial ground ceremony on Friday night. We did a town proclamation, um, and um, the road race, there was a concert. There was all of the Saturday activities with um different groups running those uh volleyball, the Dolan um stroller parade, um, uh concerts, then the fireworks. The, I think there was a reasonable turnout and the pouring down rain up for the Sunday family activities. Um, and we all marched in the parade and got soaked. So, thank you again for everyone who is here to make it so fun and for all the work that everyone put into it.
I would like to thank Tom for pulling the candy cart.
Just as a reminder, with the incredible weather, we've been having the heat, the humidity, the smoke from the fi- wildfires um and all the rain that's kind of been hitting us all. Just keep an eye on our, your neighbors, family, friends, check in. Um, the council on aging on Glenwood Road, the library here, um, and the town buildings do have air conditioning. If it's really hot, humid, uh, air quality is an issue. Um, there's also the pools open, weather permitting, uh, for a way to cool off. Um, and with the most recent downpours, but the ongoing downpours, if you're experiencing any washout from um the rain and the construction, call DPW and they'll triage you through to whom can help best. Um, I just want, looking out a couple weeks, I wanna remind everyone of Rutland Takeover Day at the Wusox. That's Thursday, July twenty-seventh at six forty-five. Uh, tickets are available online. Concerts on the Common will resume on Friday, the twenty-eighth at six P M with the local um homegrown band Midnight Riders. And then the Rutland Food Truck Festival is that Saturday, the twenty-ninth, from noon to five over at Naquaw. So that's gonna be a busy, another busy, long weekend. Um, and uh, just as a reminder, public events at the farms in town undergo a review with the uh kind of via the agricultural accessory use bylaw, which sits with the planning board. So with the hu- with the summer and the warm weather, there's a lot of events and activities happening at these farms. Um, they undergo review and have the permissions through the accessory use bylaw. If there's questions or concerns, um, reach out to us or planning board. But they, um, there are, there is language to allow for festivals and special events as well as other activities. So they've been through the proper permitting kind of process. Um, are there any other quests, comments, or announcements from the board?
Uh, on the permitting process, does that go to who wants the permitting is issued? We don't sign any permit, like vic roll or license, we don't do any of that?
No.
Okay.
If they, I mean, Tamika can speak to this a little bit. If there's a, we sign the liquor licenses through, if it's, if they have the liquor permit, um, and common vic license for just their year to year, but not special, for the special events.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay.
Um, Harry, did you have a comment about the upcoming bylaw review also?
Yeah. Um, to the board, I've been reviewing the bylaws in terms of when they are, Peter has requested uh that they come before the board for review. And I noticed there were quite a few, so I wonder if the board wanted to take a look at those and decide which ones we wanna pick, uh, which we feel are important. And uh, cause I don't know if we can do six in one night. So, uh, just to let Peter know, you know, so, uh, cause the website does, his website does say that.
So I think from, I think how we had done it in the past was that these were the ones that kind of we were hoping to get through, but um, I don't know that there's a way, I see on his website that it says select board review with certain dates. And I think the concern is that we may not get to all of those on that date.
Correct.
So we don't wanna advertise to the public that we're going to discuss those and not.
Right.
At the same point, if we were able to get through more because there were a couple that didn't require much time for some reason, I would hate to not get through more in a kind of two-hour allotment. Um, so I don't know if maybe we can even just change like s- select board review to s- start, you know, select board start or something. Um, I'm not one hundred percent sure how the rest of the board feels.
Well, well, review is just that. I mean, we're just, there's no deadline.
Right, but. Right, but if he has them listed that we're going to talk about them on the twenty-sixth of July and then the thirty-first, and we don't get to all of them, or maybe we can get through and then we decide we wanna take treasurer or collector also on the twenty-sixth or something, um.
The reason I said, if you look at the form, the substantive changes that he's made, that's a lot of stuff to review. And then you turn over here and you go to town meeting, a lot of stuff, select board, oh. So I don't know in a fair discussion to the board if we could rush through this stuff and expect to get six of them done, cause you're even looking at the town administrator and that's like two and a half pages. So, you know, that's why I'm saying, uh, we can, you know, pick less. I mean, Board of Public Works, that's kind of like a, you know, not much there. So I could see maybe doing three or four, from what I would see the discussion might involve on something like this. But I just wanted to make the board aware of it.
Yep.
Unless Peter has any comments on that.
Do we even have to note a specific date?
That's kind of why I.
Well, we set the board, right, for those two dates to go over the bylaws.
To begin, yeah.
Right, yeah. But anything that has to be posted here, like, can we just say this is anticipated bylaws for review?
You could put it. TBD, to be, to be.
Right. So can that be updated to either remove the dates and then we just have those?
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, TBD.
TBD, TBD.
I mean, I think some of it is, it looks like the first chunk is the first date and the second chunk is the second date. And then the, I assume the third would be the, the last.
Right.
Uh, or third and fourth or whatever, but I, I understand your point and I think that it's fair that we may not get through, what is it, the five or six on the first night? Because they're the big ones.
Yeah.
And then, um, the second even, there's a few that might take some more um conversations, so.
And I just didn't want somebody to show up, citizens to show up and they're sitting through it, they'll never get through it.
Yeah. Right, right. Yep. We can, um, I mean, I'm I don't know how best to advertise which ones we're going through. I think if citizens are interested either on, on Zoom or but, uh, like I said, if we're trying to set it to a two, two and a half hour time, I would hate to end up having, getting through stuff in an hour and a half. And then we could take that extra half hour and get through another one. But because we said, didn't say that we were, on the flip side, I don't want people sitting through thinking that we're gonna get to, you know, FinCom on a certain day and then it gets pushed to, to a later date.
I mean.
I don't remember how we had done it in the past, Tamika. That's what I, yeah.
So maybe.
Yeah.
Just keep it general, general by law review.
Take them as we do.
Yep.
Okay, I just wanna point that out.
No, you're right. If you put it on there, you kind of gotta stick to that, so.
Yeah, and like I said, I didn't see it on, we haven't posted the agendas for those meetings yet, so I didn't realize that they were updated on the, um, bylaw.
Thanks, Harry.
Thank you, Harry. Any other member comments, announcements? Moving into public comments.
Well, okay.
Twist your arm, Dick.
It only took me about uh twenty seconds to think about.
What's the story on your new TPW director? Have you hired one yet?
Not yet.
You're fired. Honest to Pete, um, it's bad enough with the state and District Three not more than on the side of their roads around here on one twenty-two A and one twenty-two even. But uh, our roads are terrible. Now, this is looking out the car. I'm thinking, what about a trailer truck or something like that, the nose sticks out further in order for them to see down the road? This is, this is uh getting to be a little bit ridiculous and all that. Um, if I, uh, all depends how I feel, I may take my tractor down there and take care of this. But I, I can't guarantee it, but.
So that's what she said coming down from, um, like.
He knows.
Yeah.
He, he's been there, so. I, I just feel that, uh, you know, the sides of the road should have been, uh, you know, tackled and, you know, long before now. And also, don't forget, it's the town's responsibility to get rid of the poison ivy a long time ago. I know Sheila dibs, yeah, and I had a, she and I had a talk about how can we rather than using, um, you know, uh,
Roundup or.
Roundup or something like that, what's the best way to properly kill poison ivy on the, on the guide rails and things like that? And the more I see it, my friends uh there, it's growing in like crazy uh along Glenwood Road and, man, something's got to happen. And, and I, I feel that hopefully you had that on your goals and objectives, so uh, let's try to pick it up. That's it for the time being.
Thanks, Tech.
So you know there is a home remedy that's non-poisonous, it uses alcohol and seven up.
I've read that, yeah.
Use water, vinegar.
Non-toxic. We should just release a bunch of goats.
Like Dawn, right? Like the grease cutting, yeah.
Don't goats love poison ivy? Just release a bunch of goats.
Yeah.
We're still waiting on some parts for that tractor. I think that's, I'm happy to say that one of the goals of the select board was investing in capital equipment. So when, most of the equipment that's at the DPW is twenty, thirty years old, including that tractor, uh, that was a, a project, um, you know, throughout the winter and spring. And I think they're still waiting on some parts to get that mower out there. And also, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, our bucket truck that we share regionally with, with, you know, several towns is also in the repair shop. So two equipment that's critical to do tree work and, and kind of sightline improvements are uh under repair. So unfortunately, we're still looking for a solution there.
Uh, one comment on, especially on the bucket truck where I was asked some time ago. Uh, you are getting it certified every year, correct? They check, you know, check your truck. I forgot about it, you know, the state, and uh, make sure you don't just dump straight. Um, hydraulic fluid in the air is gotta be dielectric because of, you know, when you're close to the lines. And they say they're not, but I've seen them up close to the lines, you know, they gotta be careful.
Yeah, so we have to do regular maintenance on this truck. Unfortunately, it wasn't anything to do with maintenance, it was more operator error.
And it's a regional truck, so it's, I mean, you know how it goes.
Yes.
Yeah, so we get it three weeks out of the year between all communities.
And you get the repairs.
Yeah.
That's right for.
Yeah.
Through the chair?
Yeah.
We have enough personnel to do it. We just don't have the parts, is what you're saying. We have personnel to fix it, we just don't have the parts.
Yeah, I, yeah, Carl is, I think eagerly awaiting the uh, the parts to, it pretty much all ready to go. There's a couple more parts and it, I'm not mechanical, so you know, don't ask me what kind of parts they are. But um, important enough that it's not able to be used right now.
Okay, thanks.
What are timelines on? Is that a?
To give you reference for the bucket truck, Tamika, what was it? It was almost twenty to thirty weeks for some parts for the bucket truck.
And when was that?
Oh, wow.
Oh, geez.
There was a couple of years that we had that Town of Hubbardston's um side delivery more down here as well. It did work for us.
Yeah, and so that was a question too that was asked, could we work with another town? And I did reach out to the DPW and I believe they reached out to their contacts. Every other town is using their equipment. Um, and unfortunately, we're, we weren't able to find a community that is willing to share with us to address some of the needs that we have. So, um, looks like we may have to start getting creative if we don't have a solution soon, so.
I think after the win, this winter, especially with all the snow and ice and everything, there's a lot of limbs that needed taken care of. And then with it being such a wet, wet and cool spring, everything's just taken off, so, yeah.
But if you've got the equipment, maybe reach out to um, to Chris at DPW and maybe you can work something out to take care of that intersection.
Mine's not a, uh, over the guide rail moment.
Oh, okay, alright.
It's just a straight brush hard.
Okay.
Thanks, Tech. I know it's been on your radar for the past few meetings, so it's not off of our radar. Yeah, yep. Any other public comment? Okay, um, I will open, we have a few public hearings. I will open the public hearing for the common vic license for Varahi Foods Inc. at twenty-six Palma Guset Road, uh, which is Rutland Marketplace. Um, so, everything has been submitted, um, fees have been paid. Um, and they're just looking to, in the transition of ownership, to have their own common vic license. Is that correct? Um, is there any, um, comments, questions from the public, from the board? Um, then I would take a motion to close the public hearing.
Take the motion. Oh, make a motion.
So moved. I would take a second.
Second.
Um, Harry, just to close the motion, let's do roll call.
Okay.
Hope to close the.
Secman, I.
Mattson, I.
Ledger, I.
Governor, I.
White man, I. Um, I would then, if there's no discussion, take a motion to approve the common vic license for Varahi.
Make a motion to approve the common vic license application for Varahi Foods Incorporated, uh, Rutland Marketplace, twenty-six Palma Guset Road, um, effective as of the June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Harry, roll call.
Secman, I.
Mattson, I.
Ledger, I.
Governor, I.
White man, I. Um, I will open the hearing as, um, Board of, Select Board and Board of, Board of Public Works to set the fiscal year twenty-four water and sewer rates. Um, this was discussion or a notice that we had from Town Administrator and Treasurer Collector Department um, at one of our meetings in beginning of June, I think, um, that this would be coming before us, um, with the proposed increases, um, based on the approved budget at town meeting. So, um, is there anyone here for public comment? Yeah.
Hi.
Name an address, sorry.
I'm new here from New York. What's that?
Name an address, sorry.
Uh, Jean Segliano, Sisyp Drive. We're new here and I'm just trying to understand how things happen. Um, water and sewer, how do we determine this, the payroll for that versus DPW? It's the same people, a lot of it is on water and sewer. How is that tracked?
Yep, so, um, employees of the uh water and sewer departments are, um, paid through what's an, an enterprise fund. So the work and costs that are associated with the water and sewer utilities, including uh the services that are, that are provided by the employees, are paid through that fund. Now, if you ask, so how do you determine their compensation? They do have a union contract, so they're, um, employees of the Department of Public Works. So they actually just agreed to a new three-year uh contract. So their, um, compensation is set by the, the select board in the form of a, a three-year contract.
What I, what I was asking is how do you know on any given day, is there work for water and sewer or is there work for roads? How is it divided? How do you, how do we know how much of their percentage of time is water and sewer versus roads?
Yep.
Or are they different people?
Um, so most of them are different people. However, there are uh some employees that do end up working and, and essentially we, uh, have a calculation in, in the budget document that kind of splits out. So for example, if forty percent of their, that time is spent in, uh, the, the roads or highway department, for example, then forty percent of their annualized salary, including overtime costs, uh, would be paid through the, uh, Highway Public Works General Fund. And the remaining sixty percent is through the Water and Sewer Rates Enterprise Fund.
Where do we get those numbers? Where?
Yep, so those numbers are, those numbers are included in the, uh, annual operating budgets that are approved at the town meeting. So if you saw the budget document that was included in this year's town meeting warrant.
But on a daily basis, how is that tracked, I guess?
So, tracked on a daily basis, I, I.
Or year, you know, where did we come up with forty and sixty or whatever the numbers?
So forty and sixty was just an example, right? So, um, so, you know, so if you look at the, the payroll warrant, for example, which is a public document, you can certainly come, uh, to the town administrator's office or the treasurer collector's office, town accountant's office to get a copy of the payroll warrant. Uh, that will display to you the compensation, and it's not tracked daily per se, we do a bi-weekly payroll. So you'll be able to see, for example, if I'm a, uh, water or sewer employee, you would see the breakdown of my costs and it would show the breakdown per the, uh, fund number.
I think, if I, if I may, I think a lot of the shared cost is more on the administrative side. So the superintendent and the administrative side on the bill, like for bills and everything. And that's a little bit easier to track because we know that for billing takes a, a approximately this percentage of time of, of this administrative piece or, um,
Yep.
whatever. As far as the, the day to day, I think there's a little bit more, um, the, it, I think recently it's become much more separate that the water and, and sewer is, is focused on water and sewer um, and able to fill in as needed, but it's a much less amount, um, as far as on the labor side, if that helps. I think if we had, like, if Chris was here or if we had the DPW superintendent here, they would be able to, to better answer just as department head. Um, but I remember Joe saying that it was tracked, it's, I think, a lot on the administrative side. Um, that there's a, a greater overlap between the two, whether it's a, a enterprise charge or a DPW charge.
So to give you reference, our DPW foreman is paid, let's say roughly fifty thousand dollars. Um, he split, um, evenly fifty percent between water and sewer. Uh, we have some mechanics that are, that are paid by water, so, um, they've determined a, you know, indirect cost allocation for each employee and in our budget documents and throughout the budget process, that's where those, uh, figures are set. And then overall, those are combined into the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund under the wages and salaries line item.
We can try to get some more clarification and send it off to you, cause I can tell that you still have questions.
Yeah, I'll just digest that, come on.
Um, does the board have any questions, comments about the rates? It was what we had presented in, um, I think it was the beginning of June, or I guess it was May, maybe. Right. I was like, it was, I knew it was the new board that had discussed it, so. Um, so just for public knowledge, we would be looking at the fiscal year twenty-four rates, um, uh, which would be, um, water flow from one to fifty would be, uh, one to five hundred cubic feet per quarter would be four to four ninety-five, or four, sorry, four dollars and ninety-six cents. Five hundred one to twenty-five hundred cubic feet per quarter would be six dollars and sixty-two cents. Uh, twenty-five oh one to thirty-five hundred would be seven dollars and twenty-three cents. Thirty-five oh one or more would be nine dollars and sixty-nine cents. Um, and the, uh, Thirty-five oh one or more would be nine dollars and sixty-nine cents. Um, and the uh approximate increase in uh sewer charges would increase from eleven sixty-five to eleven seventy-seven per um CCF. It's cubic flow rate. And uh former Director Buckley estimates that this works, the collectively it works out to an average increase of fifty dollars for combined water and sewer bills annually. It's a nine percent increase in water, one percent in wastewater. Any other questions, comments? I would take a motion to close the hearing then.
Make a motion to close the hearing?
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call. Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's an eye.
Would you, I?
Y'all, I.
Wait, my eye. Um, then I would take a motion to um set the rates with a nine percent increase in water and one percent in wastewater. For fiscal year twenty-four.
This is, yeah. Make a motion to approve FY twenty-four water and sewer rate settings.
As presented.
As presented.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Alright, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's an eye.
Would you, I?
Y'all, I.
Wait, my eye. Thank you. Um, I will open.
Can I ask you not to open it?
I was gonna say, do I need to open it to postpone it?
No, you don't open. You just make a motion to postpone to a certain date, which I would have to request July twenty-fourth.
Okay, July twenty-fourth, okay. Um, so we had on our agenda um to discuss the notice of intent to sell chapter land on Emerald Road, however. Um, it was realized that only sixteen acres of the fifty-three acres that are being sold are in chapter status. So the town's first right of refusal is only on that sixteen acres. Um, so because the notice of intent was uh not filed properly, uh it needs to be refiled. Um, to uh state that we only have the um right for the six, that sixteen acres in chapter. So it will um be refiled and once that refiled is submitted properly, that will restart the a hundred and twenty-day clock for action. So I will postpone the notice of intent to the July twenty-fourth um twenty-twenty-three meeting. Do I need a motion or can I have a motion to postpone?
Make a motion to postpone the notice of intent to sell chapter land. Uh, postpone it to July twenty-fourth meeting, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns?
Just to let you know, you do know that the majority of that property is in Chickapee watershed.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because I think they should be notified also that this piece of property is coming up for sale. I noticed that somebody had, you know, thought Worcester was part of it, but they're not.
It's Chickapee.
It's Chickapee watershed.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
Uh, Dick, could you uh clarify that, like the sixteen acres that are being sold? Is that when you say that's the least amount? That's not the watershed, so out of that, what?
Well, it's it's still in, it's still part of the watershed, but um they're, they are trying to just ask us to buy the sixteen acres and ore. You know, who knows down the pike if they wanna sell some more, but but uh I'm just saying, you have to take a hard look at it because the majority of it is in the Chickapee watershed.
So I think what we're getting at is that the town would only have the first right of refusal of that sixteen acres that's in chapter land. I understand what you're saying, but just.
And that's another thing I'm through the planet, when I was on the planning board on this particular thing earlier, I asked where does it show on the map, the sixteen acres or whatever at the time, you know? At the time, the Board of Assessors does not outline where that acreage is, so how do you know? And I think that's something I think maybe in the future, you ought to have a, you know, a little bit of thought about it and.
So I think there has been some work on th- through the Assessor's Office um and through our office as well to to get an updated notice of intent with the, with more comprehensive information.
And when the, when it goes out the file also for the end of December, hopefully it's there also.
Tamika, did you have?
I, I, so I was just gonna clarify that that specific plan that Dick is referring to was requested from the applicant. And the entire fifty-three acre parcel is for sale, so we have to obtain two separate notices of intent. One for the the sixteen acres that the town has a right of first refusal to. But MGR requires that if you're selling any contiguous land, a separate purchase and sale agreement has to be brought forward. The town could potentially say that they wanted to purchase it, but we do not have a right of first refusal on the remaining land. Um, but at this time, they have an offer for six hundred thousand for all of it, so they're going to have to come up with two separate purchase prices. To to bring forward, which is what we're waiting for.
So it's possible that this would be continued to a later date if the appropriate paperwork isn't in in time? Yep, absolutely. Just for the public and anybody that's here because of the notice of intent, um try to, you know, we'll, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would just, so we won't be sending out um new abouter notifications. So I would just recommend keeping an eye on the website and when I do receive the new information, I will post it on the select board page. Um, so that folks, folks can see that. We'll also have it available in the Town Clerk's Office and then just keep an eye on the agenda. Um, because if I know that we're gonna intend to postpone it again, I will make a note of that on the agenda, so people don't show up for nothing.
Okay.
So, if I may, so the purchase, the purchase price they're looking for is based on all of the land, even if it's watershed?
With based on what we, the information that we received initially, yes.
Okay.
And the the documentation that they, they have states that the acreage is buildable. Um, so it has not delved as deeply into, you know, conservation land or watershed or or things such as that, other than we've just simply been told that the um individual that intends to purchase the property intends to build single-family dwellings.
On all fifty-six?
Um, yes.
I know, I get that, I read it, but I didn't really, okay. Huh, alright.
So we have a motion and a second to postpone. Um, I will take a roll call.
Second, I.
Matt's an eye.
Would you, I?
Y'all, I.
Wait, my eye. Thank you, Tamika.
Thank you.
Um, moving into the Town Administrator update, Austin, that's you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, wanna, well, you stole my thunder a little bit on Fourth of July. Um, I also wanna thank the community organizers from both events, Fourth of July Committee, uh other um committees that were involved in the process, town staff. Obviously, our public safety departments for a lot of the overtime and and volunteer time that a lot of them um, you know, spent uh in town. Um, as the first um you know, five days of celebrating as Town Administrator, it was great to uh to see a lot of the the spirit and pride for this important um holiday. I can see why they say um, you know, Rutland really likes their uh their Fourth of July. Um, I was really impressed with the amount of community engagement and um just excitement and enthusiasm for the um for the holiday. It was great. Um, so I look forward to it next year and I know it's gonna be probably better, um which is amazing. Uh, and I'm grateful. Um, happy new year, fiscal year, that is. Um, so as the Chair mentioned, we are uh, we have some additional resources to be able to staff up some of our departments and and some of our services as well, so uh you'll be seeing, if not already, some some job advertisements for some new folks in our departments. Um, but unfortunately, the the um celebration for the new year is already over as we're thinking about next fiscal year. So I'll be working with uh the Select Board Chair, uh CIPC Chair and the Finance Committee Chair to develop a schedule for fiscal year twenty-five uh and present to the boards for their review and and blessing as we start working with departments and committees for the next fiscal year. Uh, I want to congratulate Officer Justin Lawler and K-9 Storm for the completion of a fourteen-week K-9 Academy through the Boston Police Department. Most are actually like a six to eight week. Uh, Boston is pretty comprehensive. Uh, and it wasn't just in Boston, they were traveling all over the state for various training initiatives. Uh, so Storm, formerly named Moose, but they had to rename him because apparently he's German and that quote, you know, that conflicts with a a German phrase that I think is, you know, when you're training, you don't wanna, you want your German shepherd to be confused. Uh, so he's a one-and-a-half-year-old German shepherd and he's um, he's smart for a, still a puppy. He's, he's impressive. Um, and Justin is a Marine Corps veteran with eight years of experience in law enforcement. Joined the department earlier this year, I believe, uh and he's doing a lot of great work already with uh with Storm. You may have seen him around some of the Fourth of July uh activities. That was um, I think he finished his training July third, so that was his first day on patrol. Um, so you, you know, got to see them around. So I also wanna thank the Massachusetts Fested Dog and the Rutland Police K-9 Foundation for uh donating the costs associated with acquiring Storm, but also the training now through the Police Department and some of the equipment as well. So congratulations and thank you to Officer Lawler and Storm. Um, you, I um forwarded to the board and Finance Committee the reduced assessment vote from the Wantu City Regional School District School Committee. Uh, they had over a million dollars in excess and deficiency funds, so the uh school committee authorized the use of two hundred thousand dollars uh to reduce the uh assessments for the towns. So Rutland's assessment is now fifteen million, three hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and two dollars, which is approximately a uh forty-seven thousand um decrease in uh our former assessment that was approved at town meeting. It's still about a nine-point-two percent increase over last fiscal year. I I also would like to thank uh Fire Department Chief Niip, members of the Fire Department, both call and and full-time uh for um the invitation, but also just wanna let the community know that um uh residential, I think it's an old farmhouse on uh Glenwood Road, sort of near the Campbell Street intersection. Uh, was donated to the town for, not donated, but allowed uh to be used by the Fire Department for a live-controlled burn. Uh, which is a great opportunity. It doesn't happen a lot where there's a fire. Um, so where it's in a controlled environment, this is a training uh exercise for members of the Fire Department to get in there and they do, you know, I think they did eight or nine iterations uh throughout the morning. Um, and then they, you know, let the thing go. Uh, I was able to attend. It was hot on an already hot day. Uh, but uh just uh, it was really impressive to see some of the work that they did and a lot of work goes into uh this live-controlled burn. Uh, there's a lot of regulations that come from MASTEP and such to be able to do that. So the towns of Rutland, Holden, Paxton, and Okam uh participated in this, so it's also regional exercise for training as well. And some really great news that just came on Friday. I want to congratulate the Rutland Regional Emergency Emergency Communications Center for um an over eight-hundred-thousand-dollar grant that came in um for uh three different reasons. Uh, one was the costs associated with our Deputy Director salary. The second was offsetting the Town of Warren's uh assessment, and then the largest was a six-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-dollar grant from the State nine-one-one Department for costs associated with upgrading the way, radio equipment on all of our um cell towers. Which is a tremendous and big undertaking. We actually submitted it for uh an earmark. So good thing we don't need the earmark, we gotta do another state agency. I just wanna congratulate and thank Director Mike Moriarty for his efforts. He does a great job getting grants uh through that department. Also supporting this regional department and initiatives, so um that's great. These um, the good thing about specifically that radio upgrade project. Um, our equipment was coming to a point where it's um no longer in compliance, so it was a necessary upgrade that we would have to find a funding source either way. So the good thing is, is now it's completely covered uh by the, by the state. So congratulations again and happy to answer any questions, ma'am.
Um, question? With the upgrade on the cell towers, does that give our reach an expanded area into other towns? A better reach into other towns on those cell towers?
Um, I don't know about the reach. I just think more so in reliability. Um, so the the signal is a little bit better. It's also um and I don't know too much, maybe Paul can help me with some of the um, you know, radio um operations. Um, but I think just overall from a reliability standpoint, um and it's also just more efficient equipment.
Okay.
Basically, the system is designed to reach to a certain parameter, okay? In other words, you know. Basically, it's gonna stay within the town and if there's another, other towns involved, such as they're just bringing the Hubbardston Tower online now. And okay, so in other words, you know, these things are all part of the um equation, if you will. And so when all of this does come together, um you know, there, there'll be some improvement in what you're seeing and what you're hearing, but it's, it's more or less, you know. It gives everybody a better feeling of security about when the officers are out there doing their, doing what they're doing and that you know, they're constantly in touch with the thing. That was one of the things that I encountered along with former Chief Anderson when we did, when we started to design a system that would improve the coverage relative to what the Police Department had previously. And so we, we designed and developed a system and was installed by RORAD. And you know, I, we basically gave the town full coverage for what the Police Department did. And also improved on what the ambulance capabilities were. In other words, if the ambulance was someplace where their coverage was spotty, they had the capability of switching over to the police frequency to be in touch with the dispatch. So in other words, these things are a, a constant evolution is what you were just saying, so that's where we, that's where it all comes from.
Yeah, through the chair, Harry, just give you a brief, and when you're in the police cruiser, sometimes there's some areas in town, you can't, you can't use your radio.
Yeah.
That's pretty hairy when that.
Then, yeah, I, I'm aware of that, and you know.
Hopefully this'll improve that.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Austin.
One more question. Um, do you have any update for us on the unextended funds?
Unextended? Uh, no, so we don't have um a good read yet on what free cash or any turnback would look like. Um, you know, I think we try to get creative with some of our interdepartmental transfers to to make sure that all line items are are zeroed out. But um it's gonna take a little bit, a couple more weeks probably to get a better handle on our, on our turnback.
Okay, thanks.
And hopefully higher than anticipated revenues too.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Austin, and please pass our appreciation on to Mike and all of Dispatch because it's, you know, he's doing more grand stuff. How's the deputy and the dispatchers themselves to pick up some?
Yeah, Mike runs a very efficient program over there.
Thank you. Um, moving into new and special business, we have some interdepartmental transfers. Um, I think that this is our last meeting opportunity to to do these, hopefully. Um, and so I think we have a pack of two.
Some last-minute ones that came in after your packets were already um sent out to you guys. So all of the ones before you did go um before the Finance Committee last Thursday evening, so that's why you have two separate packets.
Okay. Nice. Um, so I think we, I would like a motion. I think, Tom, how you normally do them out, requested um a from and to, and then the reason.
Alright, uh, make a motion to transfer five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-four cents from account zero-zero-one dash two-one-zero dash five-one-two-zero dash zero-zero-zero, the police full-time wages into account zero-zero-one dash two-one-zero dash five-four-zero-zero dash zero-zero-zero, police supplies. Uh, for the FY twenty-three police supply account uh was severely underfunded. All operational expenses after November two thousand twenty-three were paid from the police gift account. Due to the personal changes throughout the year, we have a surplus in the police wages account. Some of the surplus will be transferred to the police supply account to pay for the end-of-year invoices, preventing the continued usage of the gift account.
I would take a second just correcting um that it was in November twenty-twenty-two, um cuz we haven't hit November twenty-twenty-three yet. For the verification. That was not your misread, that was mistyped.
Yep.
I would take a second. Second. Questions, comments? Harry, roll call.
Second, I.
Matt's an eye.
Would you, I?
Y'all, I.
Wait, my eye.
Like to make a motion to transfer five hundred thirty-four dollars and ninety-six cents from account zero-zero-one dash one-two-two dash five-two-zero-zero dash zero-zero-zero. Select Board purchased services to be transferred into account zero-zero-one dash one-five-six dash five-two-zero-zero dash zero-zero-zero, AT&T, Verizon, all departments. Um, when budgeting for FY twenty-three, this account was budgeted as close as possible to what the anticipated costs would be for the Crocker Communications, Verizon, and AT&T. At times during the year, the monthly assessment fluctuated a bit, so we ran short in this line item. The requested amount will bring the account back to zero and any future bills will not be due after July one, two thousand twenty-three.
Second. Second. Questions, comments? Harry, roll call.
Second, my eye.
Matt's an eye.
Roger, I.
Y'all, an eye.
Wait, my eye.
Like to make a motion to transfer seven hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-six cents from account zero-zero-one dash one-two-two dash five-two-zero-zero dash zero-zero-zero, select board purchased services, transferred to account zero-zero-one dash one-two-nine dash five-one-one zero dash zero-zero-zero, town administrator salary. The amount of twenty-one thousand requested from Opera Funds was short by seven hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-six cents to cover additional hours worked by Gary when he was employed simultaneously with Austin. The amount requested will leave the account at a zero balance at the end of FY twenty-three.
Tom, I apologize. I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just realized I forgot to take that one out of your packet 'cause we actually updated the amount and there's another transfer in your packet that's for the correct amount for this line item.
So x this one?
I'm very sorry. Yep, x this one out.
Tamika, that's a lot to read.
Sorry. The explanation said the same thing on the other one, though.
All right, where are we now? Nine thousand, okay. Like to make a motion to transfer nine thousand dollars from zero-zero-one dash two-three-one dash five-one-two-zero dash zero-zero-zero, ambulance wages into account zero-zero-one dash one-five-one dash five-two-zero-zero dash zero-zero-zero, legal. Uh, as you recall, the committee authorized an RFT of ten thousand dollars in March two thousand twenty-three to cover the deficit in the account. Unfortunately, the invoices have far exceeded the amount that was transferred, largely due to two costly ZBA appeals in the Superior Court. Uh, the invoice for May two thousand twenty-three is five thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty cents, and the invoice for the first fifteen days of June is three thousand, ninety-six dollars, eighty cents. The requested amount includes these two invoices, less the remaining balance in the account, and an additional three thousand dollars to hopefully cover the anticipated, uh, the anticipated.
Sorry, I cut it off. I was gonna say, um, the last invoice for the last fifteen days of June.
Uh, is there a second? Second. Questions, comments? Harry, roll call.
Um, question?
Yeah.
Um, again, this kinds of transfers is kinda new to me. So we're taking from ambulance for legal? We're not, that's the only place we have is ambulance to take it from, or is that, why do we take it from ambulance?
Um, so at this time of the year, we kind of take it from wherever we can. Um, it doesn't have to come from the the same department. And I happened to be having a conversation with Chief Neip and he noted that he would have excess funds in that account and offered for me to take it from there. 'Cause initially I was going to have to make another reserve fund transfer request from the finance committee and we were able to find it from this line item instead.
Next question. Do we normally run these kinds of charges this late in the year for the ZBA, or is it unusual?
Um, this is unusual. These are two cases in particular that were appealed, um, which does not often happen, um, but one of them is a very highly contentious one. And so these have been in the Superior Court for several months and one of them will be a year in August. And unfortunately, we can't anticipate the cost on that because we never know how much work will go into it each month. Um, and so that has been a very um costly, over and above what we usually pay for town council services.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Um, roll call.
Second, my eye.
Matt's an eye.
Roger, I.
Y'all, an eye.
Wait, my eye.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to transfer three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-seven cents from account zero-zero-one dash two-two-zero dash five-one-two-zero dash zero-zero-zero, the fire-on-call wages to account zero-zero-one dash one-five-five dash five-two-zero-zero dash zero-zero-zero, network purchased services. When budgeting for FY twenty-three, this account was cut and ended up, ended up ring, was it being? Ended up being underfunded for the year. The fire chief agreed to cover the deficit um from the overage in his wage i- uh wage line item.
Is there a second? Second. Questions, comments? Harry, roll call.
Second, my eye.
Matt's an eye.
Roger, I.
Y'all, an eye.
Wait, my eye.
I'd like to make a motion to transfer five hundred and fifteen dollars and two cents from account zero-zero-one dash one-two-nine dash five-two-zero-zero dash zero-zero-zero, town administrator purchased services into account zero-zero-one dash one-five-six dash five-two-zero-zero dash zero-zero-zero, AT&T, Verizon, all departments. When budgeting for FY twenty-three, this account was budgeted as close as possible to what the anticipated cost would be for the Crocker Communications, Verizon, and AT&T. At times during the year, the monthly assessment fluctuated a bit, so we ran short of the line id- line item. A transfer of five hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-six cents was approved in June, so that is why we are seeking the difference. The last AT&T mobility uh bill for FY twenty-three was higher than expected and included an overage charge for data.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Harry, roll call.
Second, my eye.
Matt's an eye.
Roger, I.
Y'all, an eye.
Wait, my eye.
Like to make a motion to transfer two hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-two cents from account zero-zero-one dash four-two-one dash five-one-four-zero dash zero-zero-zero, DPW DPW overtime wages into account zero-zero-one dash one-four-one dash five-one-two-zero dash zero-zero-zero, administrative assessor salary. With the charge and staffing in March two thousand twenty-three and the wage adjustment made, the salary line item uh will be short by the above requested amount.
Is there a second? Second. Uh, questions, comments, concerns? Harry, roll call.
Second, my eye.
Matt's an eye.
Roger, I.
Y'all, an eye.
Wait, my eye.
Uh, make a motion to transfer two hundred and eight dollars and eight cents from account zero-zero-one dash one-four-five dash five-two-zero-zero dash zero-zero-zero, treasurer-collector purchased services into account zero-zero-one dash one-six-zero dash five-two-zero-zero dash zero-zero-zero, machine and paper purchased services. This is the additional copy charges exceeded minimum contract amounts.
Is there a second? Second. Questions, comments, concerns? Harry.
Second, my eye.
Matt's an eye.
Y'all, an eye.
Wait, my eye.
Uh, make a motion to transfer twenty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents from account zero-zero-one dash one-five-nine dash five-two-zero-zero dash zero-zero-zero, postage purchased services into account zero-zero-one dash one-five-nine dash five-four-zero-zero dash zero-zero-zero, postage supplies, the rate increases and additional mailings.
Is there a second? Questions, comments, concerns? Harry, roll call.
Second, my eye.
Matt's an eye.
Y'all, an eye.
Wait, my eye.
Like to make a motion to approve one hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-four cents from account zero-zero-one dash one-four-five dash five-two-zero-zero dash zero-zero-zero, treasurer-collector purchased services into account zero-zero-one dash one-four-five dash five-one-two-zero dash zero-zero-zero, treasurer-collector assisted, assistant wages. Uh, miscalculated salary adjustment for minimum wages increase, uh, January first, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a second? Second. Questions, comments, concerns? Harry, roll call.
Second, my eye.
Matt's an eye.
Roger, I.
Y'all, an eye.
Wait, my eye.
Like to make a motion to approve one thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty cents from account zero-zero-one dash four-two-one dash five-one-four-zero dash zero-zero-zero, DPW overtime wages into account zero-zero-one dash one-two-nine dash five-one-one-zero dash zero-zero-zero, town administrator's salary. The amount of twenty-one thousand dollars requested from Opera Funds was short by one thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty cents to cover additional hours worked by Gary when he was employed simultaneously with Austin. The amount requested will leave the account at a zero balance at the end of FY twenty-three.
Is there a second? Second. Questions, comments, concerns? Harry, roll call.
Second, my eye.
Matt's an eye.
Y'all, an eye.
Wait, my eye. Just one comment, Austin, for a couple of these with miscalculations and everything, they are being updated to go into the fiscal year twenty-four budget of, with the appropriate correct numbers.
Yeah, so at at the um end of the year and start of a new fiscal year, we go through the payroll certification process, so. Um, I think the minimum wage increase, I don't think there's any more after this. I think this was the last one. So any other salary adjustments that come in the form of a COLA or any other increase will be a little bit better planned.
That's, thank you. Um, moving on, we have a redraft of the S twenty-three seventy-one Select Board Membership Home Rule petition. Uh, this was approved at ta- uh town meeting, a couple town meetings ago, was it the?
This was on the fall.
The fall, right, yeah. Um, and if I understand correctly, it's gone through um some committee and they've asked for just some language update, basically to take out the language saying uh referring to our local bylaws because the state does not mess with local bylaws. So, um, they've just asked for the language to be cleaned up there and returned a draft. But they're asking us to um, uh, uh, motion to approve the updated draft. Is that?
Yeah, so this is a common, when we have home rule petitions, once it gets into committee, um, oftentimes they'll clean and polish up the language. Uh, the only thing that's required is to come back to the select board for the blessing of the amended language.
So I would take a motion to um, uh, approve the the amended language.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended language.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, Harry, roll call.
Second, my eye.
Matt's an eye.
Roger, I.
Y'all, an eye.
Wait, my eye. Um, we have uh an appointment to CIPC. Um, Harry, I will let you take this one.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Britton Bradford to a three-year term on the Capital Improvement Planning Committee.
Second.
And we have the letter of interest and the chair has.
Me too, yep, and everything.
Thank you.
Do we wanna have those presented to the board when we have appointments, or it's okay, just that she hasn't?
Generally, we just ask for the the check, kinda check marks that we have, that she's received them appropriately.
Okay.
I think if there's a, like a option for multiple candidates to appoint to one, you know, that we have one seat and we have multiple candidates to choose from, then we may ask them to come in and and see the letter and and kind of.
Um, as the CIP chair, uh, I I feel that this will be a great addition to the committee. Uh, you'll bring a lot, particularly when we start looking at things that require a lot of building maintenance and costs. You'll bring a lot to that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Oh, I apologize. I missed your seconded.
All right, I'll take a roll call. Harry.
Second, my eye.
Matt's an eye.
Roger, I.
Y'all, an eye.
Wait, my eye, with appreciation. Thank you, Britton. Um, is there any other business to come before the board? Any other agenda items that anybody has? I think we're hoping to get to our goals and objectives, kind of, um, ratification next meeting, hopefully. And then, um, looking forward, we have, our July twenty-fourth meeting is our next regular scheduled meeting. Um, the July twenty-sixth and July thirty-first are the bylaw review meetings. And then we'll, we're into our August seventh meeting, which is a regular scheduled meeting. Hearing no other business or anything, I would take a motion to adjourn.
To make a motion to adjourn the meeting at?
Second.
At, I got, seven oh four.
We'll take a roll call, Harry.
Second, my eye.
Matt's an eye.
Roger, I.
Y'all, an eye.
Wait, my eye. We're adjourned at seven oh four here.